I'd like to call the Thursday, April 6th Forest Lake Area School Board meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Member Third, would you please say your own call?
Sure. Member Revlon?
Here.
Member Corcoran is absent. Member Hagelin?
Here.
Member Peterson?
Here.
Member Rayfield's absent. Member Christensen?
Here.
And Member Tyson.
All right, and this time I accept a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Member Revlon?
I have an amendment to the agenda. I'd like to amend the agenda by striking actually I have eight dot ten.
Second. We have a motion or an amendment and a second to strike eight dot ten. Discussion?
I would approve striking that from the agenda. I've been looking into this plan a little bit more since the last meeting and while researching, I've found that Minnesota Statute 124b dot eight sixty-one, the Achievement and Integration for Minnesota states in subdivision four, if the timeline and implementation of board must approve its plan and submit it to the Department of Education by March fifteenth. The Minnesota Department of Education's website shows their required plan components of school board approval and submitted to MBE for review and approval by March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Also, in Minnesota Department of Education's frequently asked questions, there is a question that states, what if our school board doesn't approve our ANI plan until after March fifteenth deadline for submitting plans and budgets to MBE? The response that March fifteenth deadline is stated in legislation and does not change from year to year. And finally, yesterday, I called the Senator or the Senate office and talked to a Senator on the Education Policy Committee. They contacted the nonpartisan Senate Council Research and Financial Analysis Office. The SCRFA response regarding the ANI March fifteenth deadline was MBE does not have the authority to change a deadline set in statute, and statute does not provide a method for extension. So for those reasons, I do not support or I support striking it from the agenda and not moving forward with it.
Thank you. Member Hagelin, any further discussion?
Well, I'm just curious. What Senator was that? Could you state the name again, please?
Julia Coleman.
And from what district and where?
At least she represents McNea. She is on the Education Policy Committee.
Okay. And I also have a question for you, Member Hagelin. Did you not both want more information about our ANI plan?
I did.
Okay, so in essence, we requested an extension based on your request.
Well, I don't remember the board ever being presented with an extension to MBE, which isn't legal anyway, and this plan was known to have a March fifteenth deadline well before, so it could have been, the plan could have been presented many months ahead of time.
I can address that question to Member Tyson. At the time that I had originally made that request for the extension, I was told the deadline was April fifteenth, so we had plenty of time prior to the deadline.
I don't remember that being mentioned in the meeting, Member Revlon, when we granted the extension?
We did not discuss the extension in the meeting. We discussed the extension meeting up to the meeting. I remember April fifteenth as the date.
So, Member Chair, I'll call the regular motion.
All right, so.
I have another comment I'd like to make.
Go ahead, Member Revlon.
All right, so with what Member Hagelin was saying, I just want to point out that our Code of Ethics, Policy one fourteen, states that in fulfilling our legal obligations as a school board member, that we will comply with all federal, state, and local laws. Our district indemnification policy, number one twelve, is likely not applicable in this situation due to the Minnesota Court Claims Act that states that indemnity does not apply in cases of willful or wanton actions. This implies that the district and individual board members can potentially be held liable. This is especially concerning since our local property taxpayers are responsible for thirty percent of the funding of this program through a local levy. Because Forest Lake Area Schools is a voluntary participant in the ANI program, we are not obligated to approve this plan. I feel that doing so may put us in a position of legal jeopardy, and therefore I urge my colleagues here tonight to vote in favor of removing this from the agenda.
Any further discussion?
Well, I just find it very curious that in all the years that we've had the ANI plan, it has never gone beyond the deadline, but it was per your request that we held it off and did the whole presentation over. Even though you had a, you had a presentation during your.
Please remain clear, recognized.
During your orientation, correct? And you requested another one?
If you're going to ask a question, you may let us respond.
I did not make the request to have it pulled from the agenda and moved at first reading.
I don't think you understand my question. Did you have ANI in your school board orientation?
It was addressed in my school board orientation as a part of one of many things that was addressed in the hour and a half that we had.
Did you have more questions?
I did, and I sat down with the Director of Teaching and Learning to learn more about this plan. And it wasn't until I did the research after the last board meeting that I came across the March fifteenth deadline in the statute.
Member Revlon?
I would like to address Member Tyson's first inquiry about never approving this plan outside of the March fifteenth deadline. On March twenty, on March sixteenth of two thousand and seventeen is when the Forest Lake Area School Board approved the two thousand and seventeen plan. So it has gone beyond deadline before.
And was that a Sunday?
March sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Yeah, what day of the week was it?
I believe it would have been a Thursday night based on past precedents of meetings, but I'm happy to look that up for you.
Thank you.
Do we have any further discussion on the amendment?
Does Member Tyson want the answer to that question prior to moving to a vote or? I just have to rewind a few years here. I'm starting. Maybe there's a quicker way to do this. We're almost there. I apologize for the delay.
March sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen was a Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just got back to April.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion on the amendment, I guess we'll take a motion. All those in favor of the amendment signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion to amend fails. Back to the original motion. Do we have any further discussion on tonight's agenda? Motion to approve tonight's agenda. Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of tonight's agenda signify by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Move on. Scheduled and unscheduled visitors? Member Revlon, listening session?
Yeah, we had a pretty good crowd in there this evening. We had one individual inter, come in and discuss a number of transportation issues, a number of questions there, talk about the recent number of cancellations we've had. We also had, and talked about some of the pay issues, and he had some great suggestions there. I thought it was a really good discussion. He also brought up the policy on the CDL drug testing that we'll be talking about later this evening. Superintendent Massey is going to go back and help us better understand what the procedure for that policy will be, just to make sure that it's done out to drivers in an equitable fashion. We also had, I felt, really good discussions around the proposed ANI plan. I felt it was very good collaborative dialogue. I think that concludes my report from that. Anything to add? Member Peterson?
I think you covered it rather well.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to speakers tonight. We have several, so I will caveat this, but we are going to start out with a three-minute limit. Member Tyson will be timing them. She will give you a sign when there's thirty seconds left, and I will be stopping you at exactly three minutes because we have so many parts to talk. So be prepared for that. First up, we have, is it Sherry Larson? Sharie, sorry. I apologize.
Is this on?
I think so. I believe so. Yeah.
Good evening, members of the school board, parents, and community members. My name is Sharie Larson. I'm here today to express my support for the Achievement and Integration Plan that will be voted on by our school board tonight. First, I would like to tell you a little bit about myself. My husband Scott and I have lived in Forest Lake for seventeen years. We have three children educated by the Forest Lake Area School District. They are twenty, eighteen, and fifteen. I grew up on Madeline Island, Wisconsin. I'm an enrolled member of the Red Cliff Band of Lake Superior Chippewa. I've been teaching in Forest Lake for twenty-five years as a fifth grade teacher and for the past four years as an elementary media specialist. I have spent time on the district equity team, my building equity team, and this year I've been part of a curriculum review team, which is evaluating curricular materials through the cultural competency lens. I feel very qualified to speak on this topic. It's my belief in society, we have come a long way in recognizing the importance of diversity, equity, and inclusion. However, we still have a long way to go. I have a few reasons why I believe the Achievement and Integration Plan should be approved. Strategy number one of the plan relates to family engagement. Some of the effects of the plan are having cultural consultants and liaisons to support families. This will help schools be more welcoming for our students. I attended a small high school. There were pros and cons of this, but one benefit was that I had a close relationship with my teachers and school counselor. Their support and guidance ensured that I went to college and met my career goals. Students at a large high school may not have those connections with their teachers or dean. The Integration and Achievement Plan offers additional supports for students who may need it. Strategy number two of the plan refers to the cultural, culturally responsive learning environments. As a child, I remember hearing references to drunk Indians and other derogatory comments. This damaged my Native American identity. If our schools can help students feel proud of their identities, it's a positive thing. If our curricular materials represent a wide range of authors, points of view, and assist in developing healthy identities, it's a positive thing. Many students of color and Native American students will feel more pride in their cultural identity as a result of some of the cultural groups they can be a part of. My daughters benefited from the American Indian programming offered by the district. The Achievement and Integration Plan that's up for approval continues to move our district in the right direction. It seeks to address the disparities that exist in our schools and provide all students with the support they need to succeed. There are some people in our community who say plans like Achievement and Integration are just another way to promote critical race theory, make our white students feel guilty, and make our students of color feel victimized. I disagree with this point of view. This plan promotes none of that. Let me use a metaphor to explain what this plan actually is. The goal of this plan is to grow a well-tended garden, where every plant receives the right amount of water, sunlight, and nutrients to grow and flourish, just as garden needs careful attention to ensure that each plant has a chance to thrive. Equity policies aim to provide all members of a society with the resources and support they need to reach their full potential. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll have April Egan.
Hello, everybody. I missed a lot of the meeting because I couldn't really hear outside. There's so many people here to speak on this topic. I wanted to address the board, so thank you first for giving us all the time to hear our thoughts and our opinions as the community. I've had an opportunity to read the ANI plan, and as a mom with students in the district, they're fifth, fourth, and second grade, and they're mixed. And having had the opportunity to read this plan, I think there's a lot here that can benefit my students and all students in this district. And I want to give you like a little bit of a perspective, right? We've always been in this district, and my, my kids have experienced bullying here because of their race. And while this plan specifically does not do anything to address the overall nature of our, and culture of our district, I think it says a lot that the community is coming together here to fight over this plan, but not yet fighting for the safety and well-being of my students in this district. All three of my kids have told me that they routinely call poop on playground because of their skin color. Two of them are told that they are not allowed to drink at the water fountain. There's so many more instances, right? I want to make sure that our district is heading in the direction of equity and inclusion for all students as a whole, right? This, this plan here specifically addresses academic goals. And while that is wonderful and definitely needed, I think if we are not willing to vote yes for this plan, it is speaking to another higher, bigger problem that we have in this district of not wanting to be an inclusive district for students of all colors. And so, this is the small step to say yes to an ANI plan, and the bigger thing that we need to address is our community engaging in diversity work. I don't know why I can talk that much. Diversity work, equity work, and being there for all of the students in our district regardless of where they come from, what they believe in, or anything like that. And also, I'd want to underline that before you vote no to this plan, you have an alternative plan already in place to address the same issues that are being addressed in this plan. You can't vote no unless you have another alternative plan that we as the community can review. Thank you.
Thank you, April.
Thank you.
We will move on to Diane Miller. We have Diane Miller?
I am Diane Miller, and I am a mom and a grandma. And I address members and Dr. Massey. I had not known about Achievement and Integration Program until it was presented at the February sixteenth meeting. Listening to that presentation and reading through the world's best workforce bill that was passed in two thousand and thirteen to ensure that every school district is making a plan to increase student performance, but I have to conclude after reading through all of that that this program is an absolute failure in regards to both achievement and performance. This is the fifth plan submitted to the board. Looking at the results reported to the Minnesota Department of Education from previous years to record the effectiveness of the program in achieving goals set, none of the goals were, none were met in closing the gap between BIPOC and white students in either math or reading. The gap in math actually rose from eighteen percent to nineteen point eight percent. Third grade reading proficiency fell from forty-nine point seven to forty-nine point three. In fact, only five percent of the one hundred and seventy-one schools enrolled in Achievement and Integration were able to achieve their goals. The goals that were achieved are in the category of culturally responsive training for students and staff. Culturally responsive training, CRT, there's that word, but it's word salad for teaching that white kids are privileged and BIPOC kids are victims. This program makes an automatic assumption that a student, based on the color of their skin, that is racist. My father worked his whole career at Grandview College in Des Moines, Iowa, integrating students of color into their programs. If you had talent, he would say, you deserved opportunity. This program literally segregates students based on color alone and not on ability. My father would be mortified. Forest Lake participation in Achievement and Integration is voluntary. It is the very definition of insanity to repeat the same program time after time expecting a different result. Please ask yourselves why you would continue to burden teachers and staff with programs and training that do nothing to improve the performance of all students. Just because an idea sounds good doesn't mean it is good. And that's a quote from Kopa Manska, attorney and mother of three. She's also a woman of color.
Thank you. We'll move on to Laura Dirago.
Hello there. I'm Laura Dirago. I am pleased to be able to stand before you and share with you my opinions on the ANI plan, and I did write them out so they don't slip my mind. I'll try to keep my speed going so I can get it in three minutes. Just to provide context, I am married to an African immigrant for twenty-five years. We've lived in and been raising four children in this community for the last twenty-three years. ANI plan is a voluntary plan you put in place in order to qualify for over eight hundred thousand dollars per year from the state of Minnesota. You're planning to vote to approve it for another three years. The ANI plan is based on CRT principles, that our school is systemically racist, resulting in an achievement gap between some black and white students. First of all, I don't believe in your data, and I totally disagree with your theory. I believe your continued support for divisive racial theories is harming our students. I know you've been doing this for the last eleven years. I believe your initial intentions may have been good, but for the last few years, our community has clearly rejected you inserting politics and controversial racial theories into the classrooms. The evidence for this is that the two of the three new school board candidates, couldn't lurk, sorry, Luke and Kurt, I'm going to mix those up, had won in the November school board race. They ran in opposition to this. They won despite the school administration, school board members, and the teachers' union using all their means possible to oppose them, including stooping to new laws to defame them. At first, I gave you the benefit of doubt. Not now. You thumb your nose at the will of the majority in our community, and as their elected representatives, you do someone else's bidding. It's a disgrace. Anyone not willing to represent our community should resign now. It is plain hubris. It's pride for you to think you know better than the people that elected you. I, like the majority in our community, reject the ANI plan and all that it stands for. It perpetuates old racist beliefs that somehow black students can't compete against white students academically. It supports controversial theory called CRT that it cherry picks data to support its hypothesis that black students don't measure up to white students because of systemic racism. I think your data and your theories are blatantly false and actually may cause harm to all students, including the ones you claim you want to help. You lower expectations, you give added benefits or special treatment because of the color of a student's skin. This sounds like racism to me. I watched last month's presentation about the ANI plan, and this is when it got extra personal for me. I saw one of your ANI goals, which is to get more black students into AP classes. Couple of months ago, my ninth grade son was called down to the office. He was praised. He was encouraged to take AP chemistry next year. He felt good, thinking all his hard work was being recognized, but no. In reality, he was only there because he was black. Did all the other kids with a three-point-eight GPA get called down to the office? No. My son is a high-performing student and a great athlete with two supportive parents. He wasn't lacking anything. Don't you think there were other students more in need of support? But because he was black, he was picked out. Imagine how he felt when I explained this to him. He was deeply offended and insulted at the mere thought. My son is competitive, and he works hard. He wants to succeed on his own merit. He doesn't want to be given an unfair advantage because he's black.
Laura.
Just so you can check.
Your time's up.
You missed my sign.
Oh, yeah, I was busy reading. I'll, I'll come back if there's time.
Thanks.
We'll move on to Jim Smith.
Good evening, board members. Gaps exist. We know it. I should say, go ahead first. My name is Drew Smith. I have lived here in Forest Lake for about thirty years. My wife taught in the district for a number of years. I have been involved in education nationally, training teachers, so I have conversations with teachers and leaders all over the country on these issues. And it's similar problems here are everywhere around the country. Our gaps do exist. There is no doubt about that. Schools in much of our country now work for all kids. Part of being on the board and part of being involved in this district is that the goals are to make schools work for all kids. You know, that's, that's important here. The gaps have actually grown in the last thirty, forty years. Since nineteen fifty-four, the gaps were closing until the nineteen eighties, and then something happened. Something turned that around, and the gaps continue to grow today in this country. Excuse me if I take two glasses off here. Something needs to change to make the system work better. I encourage people to look at the data, look at the research data, at these systems that they want to put into place. That's the data you need to be looking at. I'm not really concerned about some of this other stuff that's called data. Look at the good research data that's out there in this program and that supports this program. Like I said, teachers matter, and we have good teachers in Forest Lake, but they cannot do it alone. The system matters also, and systems change very slowly, but this is an important step to turn the tide a little bit. And as far as looking at scores and drops, anybody that's used an MCAs over the last two or three years, you can't really count those. I'm sorry, a lot of people didn't take them. The conditions, education tree fell for a year while people were reinventing education, and now we're trying to get back to normal again. And this is a good place to move from all the trauma of COVID. So I would like anything you do to be research-based and include best practices, and the, the culturally responsive learning has that research background. This plan is a good plan. It's a chance to be a game breaker, I think, in the district. Learning is a trajectory. Students that struggle are usually on a trajectory for that. Students that do well are on a trajectory for that as well. This could break that trajectory for some of these kids, and it's a good opportunity for this district. It's a good opportunity for the kids in this district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. We'll move on to Kelly Larson.
Good evening, school board members and others in attendance. My name is Kelly Larson. I am here tonight to speak in support of the renewal of our district's Achievement and Integration Plan. The goal of this Minnesota Department of Education-funded program is to provide financial support for resources, programs, and training that help ensure each and every student gets what they need to be successful in our schools. More specifically, some of the key ANI areas of focus are fostering innovative and integrated pre-K through twelve learning environments, ensuring career and college readiness programs, and rigorous coursework, providing professional development opportunities focused on the academic achievement of all students, supporting family engagement initiatives to increase student achievement. Throughout my seventeen years in the district as a music educator and now a QCOM peer coach, I have seen these funds do amazing things for student staff in building programs at many of our schools and at both the secondary and elementary level. I have seen teachers trying innovative collaborative strategies that engage every learner in their classroom. I have witnessed high school students contributing their perspective and ideas in an AP class that they never thought was an option for them. I have heard stories about cultural liaisons who have reached out to families who felt disconnected from what is happening in their child's school and given them the resources they need to stay engaged. I have learned about programs that give our FLAS students leadership opportunities that help them build lifelong skills in important areas such as critical thinking, problem-solving, creativity, and teamwork. I have watched our high schools' achievement specialists give kids the skills, confidence, and motivation they need to take rigorous college and the school's courses. I have been part of a middle school after-school program that provided a safe place for students who didn't feel connected to school through sports, drama, or academics, to learn, grow, socialize, and make new friends. I have seen elementary students show excited curiosity, increase their STEM skills through partnerships with organizations like the Science Museum of Minnesota that offer kids opportunities to explore STEM topics with innovative technology. And I have learned from opportunities provided to me as a teacher through ANI funds that have made me a better educator for every student in my classroom. have made me a better educator for every student in my classroom every day. All of the above have been supported by A&amp;I funding, and our district's leadership continues to use these funds creatively and effectively each year to help kids thrive. While some might want to politicize this benefit or make assumptions about what A&amp;I funding is all about, I just have to say that I have seen the benefits of this program firsthand, and it has done nothing but provide valuable experiences, opportunities, and resources for our student, staff, and community. We depend on these funds to make schools better for every student, so please, support this plan for our FLAS kids, our community's future leaders.
Thank you. We will move on to Christine H. If you could give your last name when you approach the microphone.
Hello, my name is Christine Hinckley. I'm a mom and I live in Wyoming. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the Achievement and Integration Plan. Last month, Mr. Jacobson and Mr. Ward presented on this plan, and they talked about the $840,000 that this program brings in and stressed that although many of the planned goals are directed at reducing racial disparities, the program should benefit all students. According to your last two achievement and integration reports, none of your goals came close to, excuse me, to achieving gaps between student groups that have been met. Over the last three years, the racial disparity between white students and students of color and reading has dropped only slightly. It started at 20%, it dropped slightly, but still sits at 18.2%. Three years ago, the racial disparity in math was 19.6%. It has actually increased slightly and now sits at 19.8%. Unfortunately, the data from your own records do not show encouraging results. The reports from the Minnesota Department of Education's website make it easy to see the percentage of students proficient in math and reading in the Forest Lake area public schools. The trends for all racial subgroups are concerning. Since 2018, the percentage of white students proficient in math has dropped from 66% to just 51%. The percentage of Hispanic student proficient in math has dropped from 41% to just 32%. And the percentage of Black students proficient in math has dropped from 28% to only 22%. Clearly, it is not just the disparities that are concerning, but also the trends for all students. Common sense tells us that any reduction in achievement gap, if the proficiency scores of all of these groups are declining, could not be considered a success. COVID policies no doubt played a role in the last few years. However, each of the three racial groups that I just mentioned dropped about four percentage points in their math proficiency rates in just one year, and that was prior to the beginning of the pandemic, excuse me. I share these comments because I want you to consider if you are funding programs that are truly helping students succeed in their academics. You have been elected to represent the community's best interests, and ultimately, you are responsible for approving this plan. We all want to see students' achievement scores improve and disparities eliminated. But before voting, please ask yourself if the program you are choosing to fund are actually producing desirable results. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Bruce Bukalich. What's that?
Bukalich.
Bukalich?
Yes, sir. Thank you for letting me speak. I don't have any prepared statements, per se. I have some comments and some questions. I had an opportunity to read this plan, and although I understand that there are some things in here that are certainly worthy, there's a lot of things in here that are very concerning to me. There are some things in here where you're talking about increasing by 5% each year the number of students who indicate they strongly agree or agree that their experiences with cultural responsive student leadership see themselves as a leader and so forth and so on. But it sounds so North Korea-like. You will believe. We will get you to believe, and we're going to increase the number of the people that will get you to believe this, whether you want to believe it or not. The other thing that I see used in this document so much is the word equity. And I really question, what does that mean? What is equity? How does that differ from equal opportunity? I'm a former teacher. My concern was to have an equal opportunity for all the students to learn. But what is equity? Is that desired, that is the same outcome from everybody regardless? I'd like the board members to describe to me what the word equity means in the context of this and towards education. And if you can't, I'd like you to at least at some point explain to the community what the heck that means, equity. Equal opportunity, that's what it should be, not equity. The last thing I want to read is an article very quickly about, from a teacher in another school district, not in our state, but. "This past 2021 school year was a sad and worrisome turning point for me as an educator. Providence K-3 teachers were introduced to one of the most radically divisive, hateful, and in large part historically inaccurate curriculums I have ever seen in my teaching career. Yes, I am speaking about the controversial critical race theory that has infiltrated our public schools under the umbrella of culturally responsive learning and teaching, which includes a focus on identities." You won't see the words "critical race theory" on the materials, but those are the concepts taught. "The new radicalized curriculum and materials focuses almost exclusively on oppressor-oppressed narrative and have created racial tensions among students and staff where none existed before. We did not need a new curriculum for the students to learn about slavery and racism. We already did that in great depth, relying hard on the writings of great African-American authors." Okay. The last thing I want to read is this. "What saddened me was that I would not be teaching the Holocaust anymore because the Holocaust unit was not included in one of the following. Then sometime around January 2021, hundreds of new leaflet-style books arrived, poorly-written, historically biased, inaccurate, pushing racial narrative. Intellectually bankrupt as it may be, reports that the new curriculum did succeed in changing student minds. Finally, for some students..."
Bruce?
"...standing for the pleasure of allegiances..." ...no longer acceptable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Claire Luger.
Good evening. Excuse me. I'm here to speak on two items, one off the agenda and one off. First, regarding the what gender identity is video viewed by Flam students last week.
Claire?
Yes?
We've only ever allowed people to speak on the agenda at the meeting. So items that are on the agenda.
Okay, we'll do the on the agenda. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, so I'm here to advocate for the renewal of the Achievement and Integration Plan that provides the district with dollars to close the achievement gaps in our schools. This district is an organization that has a responsibility to families and taxpayers to uphold its own commitment to excellence by creating, in its own words, "a safe, inclusive learning environment that fosters personal well-being as well as its own educational equity and inclusion work. Public schools are for all learners, and I hope this work continues. If, based on hard data compiled from test scores, we can acknowledge that there is indeed an achievement gap, then we have an ethical obligation to see constructive measures to close it because all learners deserve to have their educational needs met. We need to be willing to reassess, learn, and do better as individuals and as organizations. My own three kids are half-Arab, and while they had and have had amazing teachers and experiences in our schools, it would have been meaningful for them to see teachers like themselves at school and for all staff to know the value of taking the time to learn how to pronounce their names correctly, which speaks to the culturally responsive work still ahead of us. Assessing where we've come, what we need, and leaning into supports like the A&amp;I program is part of being responsive to student needs. To reframe this program as anything but a measure to give all students what they need in our schools from start to finish is irresponsible. To vote against state money and to closing a verified gap based on race and income is a vote I'd expect in the Jim Crow era of the South. I look forward to this district continuing its commitment to that work so that every child who walks through the doors to our schools has the resources they need to be ready for school, graduate from high school, and successfully move into post-secondary education or a career path. Thank you."
Thank you. All right, I have no other green cards. Are there any other green cards on the table? CNI? We will move on. All right, next, Student Achievement, Forest Lake Area Community School Principal, Kelly LaFine.
I wasn't going to get a chance to finish?
No. Three minutes. We allowed everybody three minutes.
You have one more time. Do I have more time?
Three minutes. Three minutes abused. Moving on.
No, that's not how it's been since then. You're intentionally cutting me off.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Massey and community members. I'm Kelly LaFine. I'm the proud principal of the Community School in Alternative Learning in the Forest Lake area schools. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to share with you information and updates on how our alternative programs support student learning throughout our school district to meet the individual needs and unique learning needs of our students. Our staff members have made extraordinary efforts to provide a quality education for our students. I'm proud of how our staff members in all programs have exemplified values of unity, grit, integrity, and modeled a caring and supportive school community as we address many issues in carrying out our mission at the community school. It is a testament to the staff members' resilience, creativity, and hard work. A team of community school teachers are here this evening to share their instructional practices with you. Through their presentations this evening, you will see how we build unity and what it takes to engage students with the desire to achieve. They will share what makes alternative education at the community school more than an academic opportunity. It's such a privilege to be a part of this team. Please welcome Karen Baxter, science teacher.
I'm sharing with you tonight about elective science class that I offer, applied science, that I took in a little bit of a different direction this year, and it became more of an engineering class. And so the essential question throughout the entire class was, when should you use the scientific method versus the engineering design process? And students went through and answered that question through discussions, after some notes, and videos, using computer-aided drawings, and engineering design challenges. So the stages for all of our design challenges were that they got background knowledge, they were given constraints, and then students had to design, build, test, reflect, revise, and evaluate every design that they did. So some of the ones that we, the students, looked at this year was a catapult challenge. They had to build a catapult and test it to see how far they could get the marshmallow to fly, how far, how high, and if they could knock down a tower, which was just a couple plastic cups hot glued together. But this is some of their testing that they did, and if you go to the next slide real quick, there's some of the finished product that I still have. Some of them are not in great condition anymore because they were well-used. And then they also had, so at the end of the quarter, I asked students to reflect on what did they like about this class? Because it was the first time I had taught it in this style. So some of the quotes that they gave me, a lot of them really enjoyed doing the, having the competition between each other and working as a team to try to solve those problems. And then they had a challenge to build a water tower. And the water tower challenge is it had to supply water to two different buildings, which were actually just some other paper cups. But the cups had to be a minimum of 50 centimeters apart, and they had to be able to cut the water supply off from one of them, but still supply the other ones. So some actual, like, practical challenges there. And then the next slide shows one of our, that middle student's completed project, which is a really awesome build. He even has a little clay person on top there for us. In their reflection, I asked them what else they would want to do, how could they improve it? How would they improve the class for future students? They really wanted to do more with the 3D printer we have, the laser cutter we have, as well as learning more about coding and using kind of more current technology rather than just hot glue guns and popsicle sticks, which is what they did most of their building with this year. The next one that we have was a bridge challenge, where it had to span a 30-centimeter gap between tables. Had to be a minimum width to be able to support our masses for testing. And then they had to test them. And with this, if you go to the next one. There we go. The bridges here, these were the completed bridges. The one that held the most weight held over eight pounds, and it's made of popsicle sticks and tape. They couldn't use hot glue on these. And then I gave them a final challenge where they had to take all of this information that they had gathered throughout the class, and they had to identify a problem, brainstorm solutions, design a proof of concept, build a prototype, and then evaluate and peer review those prototypes. And I have a couple examples here. One of the students realized that I lose my whiteboard markers and my clicker for my slideshows and stuff. I set them down, and then I never know where I put them in my classroom. And so he decided he was going to try to solve that problem for me. And his proof of concept was made of duct tape. But you can see, as it progresses, he, you know, kind of moved forward from the duct tape to a paper towel roll that he cut to the right size, to a 3D-printed design, and then even modifying that. And he wasn't satisfied with his end result at this point. He felt like it could still be better, which is what I wanted them to get out of this whole project. And then one of the other students recognized that our bridge testing was really challenging because as we got more and more masses or cups full of pennies, it got harder and harder to keep those balanced on those bridges. So he wanted to solve that problem. And so he designed a basket to suspend from the bridge to distribute the weight a little bit more evenly and keep things from crashing to the ground every time we tried to balance something. He started with cardboard and duct tape, some yarn, and then went to a 3D-printed design that he created. And there were a couple more tweaks to that that he wishes he could make, but that one's pretty, pretty complete at this point. And then I asked them, looking back on the class, if you were to try to explain it and recommend it to a friend, a classmate, to take it. This was, class was a really fun way to learn, is what. I actually had multiple students say the same thing, or similar things in different ways. So, yeah.
Karen. Teri Gieson, math teacher on our math lab.
Hi. I generally, well, I probably should just describe what a math lab is. Currently, my classes are between 16 and 20 in size, and every student is taking a different course, different math course. It might be a required course, or it could be an elective course. They're in different places, and they're working individually. And I'm moving around quickly to make sure I'm getting to all students. When a student comes to me, often they're a year or more behind in math, and their confidence is shaken, they are leery to even try because they would want to fail again. So I have to create that safe space where students will trust me enough to try. I work with individuals. I can see when I'm working with them, when that click happens, when that light bulb goes on, and they're getting it. It's a good way to fill in those gaps. Like I said, students are behind, so we have to continue moving forward. But at the same time, when I see a gap, I can take a minute and we can talk about those things that haven't been accomplished in the past. those things that haven't been accomplished in the past. I do that by using that bag of tricks up there. Not every student learns the same way. They don't understand things in the same way. Some need visuals, some need to have physical things in front of them. I try to do all of those things based on the individuals. I explain things in different ways. It doesn't make sense to keep doing it the same way and have no effect. So like I said, people are kind of fed up with math a lot of times when they come to me. So I have to work on that growth mindset so that they believe in themselves, that they have confidence that they can do hard math, because math is hard. But it's reasoning and thinking and growing. And I never, ever judge, ever. I don't put labels on people. I find strengths in everyone, and we grow together.
Next, we have our special ed team. And Linda Lindeman.
And I always have to bring visuals, so please bear with me for a minute. Hopefully, it's going to stay. And I brought a script because otherwise we'd be here all night long. So hello, good evening, we're back. We would like to introduce ourselves again, especially for the three newest board members. We are the special ed team from the community school.
I'm Linda Lindeman.
And I'm Tammy Lehner. Last year, we presented our Think Outside. This was a project-based learning plan that was developed and implemented during the 2021-2022 school year with the construction of a sensory hallway walk in early childhood by community school students. This project was proven to be extremely successful and well-received by students, staff, and families. To continue to strengthen the sense of community within the Ed Center, we have continued this school year with another project-based learning project. Project-based learning, or PBL for short, in conjunction with service learning, is a powerful tool for all involved. It is a beneficial alternative to the traditional text, lecture, test approach to instruction. PBL can improve student motivation and engagement, improve teacher-student interaction, and increase the development of the four Cs: creativity, critical thinking, collaboration, and communication. With a tremendous amount of brainstorming this past fall, we decided that this year's project would be the construction of a floor model of the popular game Chutes and Ladders in a designated location within the early childhood area of the educational center. With the help of a Tefla grant, in which we applied for and was awarded, we moved ahead with preparations and named this project Game On, an exciting up-and-down game for little people and maybe big people too, as you can see right there. This project involved dual rationales based on the age ranges of students participating. Secondary students would gain awareness that they can make a difference in their community with a different age population. Early childhood students would be provided additional opportunities to practice essential academic and social skills while participating/playing the floor version of Chutes and Ladders. Besides having fun, they learned math skills, which include counting, numeral recognition, sequential numbers, one-to-one correspondence, and this also helps with literacy skills for reading as children point to their words in their beginner reading books. They will learn about the seasons using images to describe each seasonal change, communication skills for receptive and expressive language, understanding directional words such as forward, backward, before, after, next, answering questions like, what number did you roll? Or what number did you land on? Social skills, which include taking turns and following directions. This project required a lot of creativity and artistic abilities. Designs were drawn, patterns constructed, and images cut from vinyl. Installation would warrant accurate measuring and precise placement and positioning. All of these qualifications were met by a very special young lady. Madison Raftery, a junior at the community school, brought to this project her artistic talents, originality, and individuality, and knocked it out of the park. Her enthusiasm was contagious and provided me with much pride as her and I worked for several months side by side. As of right now, we are finishing up Phase Two of this PBL journey. The completion of a photo op wall for early childhood is in the works, and we are so excited for students and families to take advantage of this fun addition. During this whole Chutes and Ladders process, Madison was designing and constructing two sets of wings, butterfly and dragon wings, to hang on the wall in early childhood for students to stand in front of to have their picture taken. This poster here, that was designed by art teacher Laura Anton, explaining Madison's journey with PBL along with some of her other artwork, is currently on display at the Halbert Center for the Arts for the Ranger Art Review. And her artwork was also on display at the state Capitol recently for the Youth Art Month exhibition. This project-based learning service plan was designed to continue to create and sustain the sense of community among our youngest and oldest Rangers. Project Game On was a grand slam, a goal, a touchdown, a slam dunk, all rolled into one. Thank you for allowing us to share this project with you, and once again, thank you for your support.
Do we have any questions, comments?
I just want to say, as a new board member, when we took our tour, we saw the path at early childhood, and that was really neat. And I love the wings standing in front of that because you see that a lot now. And that is really, really creative. And to the math teacher, Terry, I just want to say, how long is your class, time-wise?
Same as any other class.
So like one hour?
The skinnies are a little less than an hour, and the blocks are 80 minutes.
So you walk around to 16 to 20 students who are all doing totally different things in an hour to 80 minutes. That is really amazing. And from someone who is not very good in math, I appreciate you a lot, and I like how you said you don't judge people and you find people's strengths, because I feel I have a lot of other strengths, but math is not one of them. So I would appreciate it having a teacher like you. Thank you for all you do.
Anyone else? Remember that line?
I am so impressed with the Chutes and Ladders. I want to go check it out.
It's actually, it's pretty fun. I'm not going to lie.
The sensory hallway has been quite a hit. I've actually seen a couple of PTOs working to save money and build them in other elementary schools. So I like to see that kind of go around.
We wanted to do a, you know, kind of a rip cause grassroots, the word I'm trying to think of. You could actually order kits online that are hundreds of dollars. There's even a company that will come in for thousands of dollars and, you know. But the most important, I think, that we did was to bridge that community between the early childhood and the community school. And so I appreciate, like with the Tefla grant this year, to have an opportunity, and Tammy and I did a presentation about a year ago on the sensory hallway, which I think still is, I need to. But it just, I've been in special ed for 30-some years, and I just still appreciate the opportunities that I've found in the district too.
And this will be hung down in early childhood so families can read about our whole progress and know where the funding came from and better understand.
Yes. So I love how this PPL project is always gifted, and it has some purpose within the district, and it's a huge undertaking. And you just, it seemed like the students are so motivated from beginning to end, and it turns out beautifully. I did see it up at the Halbert Display. I couldn't go on the big grand opening night, but it's just beautiful. It's just amazing. So thank you for your work on that and how it gets gifted and has purpose, like the sensory walk. It's just a wonderful way.
Well, it's all about students. Everything we do is student-driven.
And I just want to say one thing to the science teacher. I'm sorry for forgetting your name.
Karen.
Karen. But, you know, kudos to you for doing a new math class and incorporating that engineering and that group work and all that. I mean, we see your slides, and it looks cute. It's got marshmallows and duct tape, but that's critical skills, and that's working together, and there's so many important things that go into that. So thank you, and kudos. I mean, that's.
Thank you for your support. It, like Tammy said, the engineering class or steam lab were those four Cs, right? That students need to be successful in the world going forward.
And I like how for Matthew said, you have to create that safe space, and that is so important with kids that struggle in math, is just the warmth that you show right now. And like, I could take math from her. But I wanted, for Principal Kelly, I want to say that every year I go to the graduation at the community school, and it is just so heartwarming, and there's so much emotion and so much success there. It just is, I just don't miss it. It's one of my favorite things. Well, thank you for your support, and I have an awesome team to work with. This is just part of the team. So if you'd like to come and visit, please stop by the community school any time for the newer board members. You're welcome anytime. We would love to show you around. Thank you again.
Really, I wanted to say thank you, and I always look forward to your presentation with the visuals. It's so exciting to see, it really is. And I wanted to give a shout-out to Tefla for the grant, for making this possible. That's a great organization, and it really helps out with a lot of great projects within our district, so thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
We will move on to elementary literacy achievement. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's exciting to follow the enthusiastic presentation from our community school, Madison, and all the student work happening there. And this is another opportunity for us to highlight and share the success that we're beginning to see in our elementary English language arts curriculum. There's a bit of a backstory that creates context that's important to understand. And I want to take you back to 2013, 14, 15, 16, 17, when this district endured budget cut after budget cut due to woefully underfunded state funding for education and outdated referendum and resources in this district that were insufficient to support the work that we were doing. As a result, we went through year after year of budget reductions. And in that process, we saw class sizes go up, services be reduced, and essentially the gutting of the engine that drives teaching and learning. If you consider a local industry, Polaris, let me use Polaris as an example. If Polaris cut their research and development department, they would go bankrupt. That's essentially what we did as a district. We cut curriculum development, instructional review, curriculum budget, staff to support the teaching and learning process. Fortunately, in 2018, with a bold commitment from the school board at that time, and a committee that supported an operating referendum in 2018, we were successful, and this community supported a renewed operating referendum that allowed us to rebuild teaching and learning, the engine that drives instruction and student learning throughout this district. It's no wonder our achievement was struggling as we were getting into and beyond 2018. And then we all know what happened during COVID. Making no excuses, we rebuilt teaching and learning with a robust staff that could lead us in the instructional review process from a research-based perspective, studying what work needs to be done. And through that work, as I said, we rebuilt teaching and learning. We've invested in not only that process, but the curriculum that allows, that provides tools for teachers to engage kids in learning and teach early elementary kids the process of reading. And we're proud of the work that we're doing. We have teaching and learning coordinator Katie Lorenz, director J.P. Jacobson, who leads that department. And it would only make sense, after an $800 or so thousand curriculum investment that started this year, and the daunting work that our teachers are engaging in to lift that curriculum for kids, that we paused and take a look at its impact. And tonight, we're going to show you some early signs and early indications of the success of our educators in our elementary schools. Director Jacobson?
Well, thank you for letting us join you, President Peterson, Dr. Massey, other members of the board. We truly appreciate it. And before we get started here, I want to add my voice to those in just congratulating our community school educators on making learning live and be alive over at that building. You know, we often hear, why is this important? Well, they're applying their learning to novel and helpful and marketable ideas in a way that's going to make those students lean into what they're doing and more employable on the road, which is exactly what we want to do. That being said, thank you for that lead-in. You stole a lot of my really leading points here, Dr. Massey, but I would add to that list of things that we were able to invest in as a benefit of the 2018 referendum, the generosity of our community, would be in addition to curriculum leaders like Katie Lorenz, a team of literacy specialists that really support all of our buildings throughout the district, your four literacy specialists. And you're going to hear me reference them a couple of times as we move through this presentation, because a lot of the work that we've done has really been helped guided by them. What we are doing here is, let me take you back. In August, we rolled out a brand-new K6 literacy curriculum across the district. Teachers came in in August and began to unbox those things in their classrooms, going through training during new teacher or regular teacher workshop week, and then implementing those during, in the month of September. And the reason why we're sharing with you fall-to-winter fast bridge data is this is our first data to show how are we doing in that implementation, and are we getting returns on this investment that we have made? Now, what, just, I think it'd be important to do a little bit of back work before we even get to this August. Once we had these literacy specialists in place, some of them in place in 2018, we started to bring together working groups of educators from across the district to begin to look at some of the early literacy strategies that we really needed to continue to investigate and ensure consistency on across the board in our district, including a really strong look at phonics, phonemic awareness, phoning, graphing, mapping, a whole host of strategies that you might not know a great deal with that, how that works. But our educators have really put a lot of time and effort into researching those and training educator, their colleagues on that. Then a year later, once we were underway in that work, they pulled together another working group and took a look at how can we really lean into and implement small group instruction using the research of Jan Richardson. And this is really important for us, because it's in small group instruction when we can pull groups of students and tailor instruction based on their particular interest or their skill level as it relates to literacy at any grade level. We know that we've got class sizes that are in the mid-20s, sometimes the high 20s, and within that group of kids, you're going to have a variety of mobility levels. And when we, within small group instruction, we can be, we really insert one way that we meet those needs. About that same time, MDE, on schedule, released the new ELA standards for K-12. And that happens every 10 years. And once they were released in 2020-21, districts are typically given about four to five years to implement those standards, to really dive into them, understand them, take a look at those standards as it relates to our local data, make them, help them try to determine within teams how those can live in our current system, or the potential acquisition of new resources. And we knew within our district, we were still having our elementary educators using a fairly old set of books and resources that had been through the hands of many kids over the, over. a fairly old set of books and resources that had been through the hands of many kids over about 15 years. But we're in difficult, we're in bad shape and we're not really giving us the results that we wanted with kids. So we went through an adoption with bringing these literacy specialists, people who have advanced degrees in literacy, Katie Lorenz, who you'll hear about in a moment, is a big part of that. And we cast a wide net, looking at all sorts of different programs, research to support the effectiveness of those programs. And then this team pored over programs for many, many hours to try to narrow it based on what would be meeting our local wants and needs and values as a community. And with that, we narrowed it down after meeting with vendors and looking through these things. And again, I cannot, I wouldn't even have been able to count the number of hours that went into that. But we narrowed it down to two options and that's when we brought together a stakeholder group of K6 educators, classroom teachers, representing every building, representing every grade level across the district. And we selected a program called Benchmark Advance. And now, and I'll talk about this toward the end a little bit, but we are, you know, you see in that last bullet there, even though we're in implementation currently, we're still meeting with a K6 ELA team around continued work. And I'll talk about that when we peel a little further into the presentation. But why Benchmark Advance? Well, part of what we, one of the big reasons was is that it, the way that the program is set up is it met one of our strategic goals around school to home communication. This particular program and set of resources carries with it books that can go home with students every day, and these are the student consumable texts so that parents can look over their student's shoulder and read along with them or see what they're reading and whether it's fiction or nonfiction and have conversations with them about that around the dinner table and extend their learning. It also allowed students to, what we call mark the text, which is a strategy that has shown to be of great benefit to early learners. You know, typically, we don't want kids to write in the books at school, but in this case, they absolutely can. So as they're approaching a new text, they can circle things that are of deep interest to them, underline things that they find are critically important. They can write in their margin as they stop and think about how this might be something similar to another story they read or something similar to in their life or the questions that they have. We find that is just really engaging for kids. The books are of high interests. It aligns to all the work that we have been doing around the science of teaching, reading, heavy focus on phonics and the research that's coming out regarding that. There was a robust, comprehensive writing program that we think is really important because we want our students to become proficient writers into their future. It supported what we were doing around Jan Richardson and around the small group table. And because the way that we're set up as a school district, because we have K6 elementaries, Benchmark Advance supported a K6 elementary format. They provided enough materials and resources that would support 120-minute lip lock in sixth grade, just like we do in K through five. So I would say that this has been a significant change for our classroom teachers. There probably isn't a subject area in the elementary day that takes up as much time and work as literacy. And we shifted from a set of older resources to newer ones that have all sorts of digital helpful elements to them, different opportunities to extend learning or to engage kids in different interest areas. We are in the midst of really significant change and we know that that change will take time. It can feel messy at times. And because of the program that we selected with the different options that it has, it can feel like there's a lot there to help to try to understand and consume and absorb. And what we are seeing here is some hopeful early, or not some hopeful, I would say exciting early results in our student achievement data as it relates to this implementation. Now, implementation scientists would suggest that whenever you implement something new, particularly of this scale, we're going to see a drop in results as the educators get used to the materials and resources that they have. We do not want that, but we want to implement this the right way. And what we're seeing here is we're going to see some promising results here in a second. As we look at these things, it's important to share with the board and the community listening that here are some ways that we approach this data. We would like, and for 80% of our students to meet target with core, with tier one core instruction. What happens in the classroom each day, we want at least 80% of our students learning it the first time. We know that there are going to be some students that are going to need it different or again or need more time, and we will absolutely provide that. But if more than 20% of our students need that, then we need to do some reflecting on, are we using the right materials? Are we doing this the right way? Are we using the best practices? And once students are on target, we want them, every student, to stay on target. And we acknowledge that students are people. They're dynamic human beings. They have things happening in their life. And so if that doesn't happen for them, we're going to figure that out. We're going to figure that out. But at least 95%, if not more, of our students went on target should stay on target as we're looking at our data. What you see here is the really, the science of teaching, reading as it looks like in our system and is adopted by our district. And there's really two buckets here. There is the language comprehension and the word recognition and all the different parts that we look at that under each area. And what you see to the right is our, what we've added is in the assessments that we use internally to make sure that we are trying to measure each of these areas because we know that they all are tied together. But if a particular student is, if we have two students that are struggling in reading, they might be struggling for two different reasons. And we don't want to give them both the same intervention if that's not what they need. So we test in each of these areas and we'll show some results related to that. We'll start with early reading and I'm going to hand it off to Katie Lorenz, our teaching and learning director over curriculum instruction.
Hi, thank you, JP. So like JP said, early reading is one of the assessments that we use to help us narrow in on how we're doing with teaching students' word recognition skills. This assessment is actually layered. It's given in kindergarten and first grade. The assessment is administered one-on-one with our academic support specialist. So it's not a computer. It's sitting down with the student, going through about a 10-minute assessment with four different components. So what we have here is just to show or showcase the different assessments or different pieces that we measure in the different assessment periods. Why this is important is that you notice it changes. So in kindergarten, for example, we're looking at letter names, letter sounds, onset sounds, meaning what does, what do you hear at the beginning of a word in the fall? And in the winter, we're looking at, again, what do you hear at the beginning, but no longer letter names. We would hope through curriculum that we've mastered that. And now we're bringing in what's called decodable words, which are CVCs. So cat, bug, hop, asking students to put those letter sounds together to form words. So as we look at the data for early reading, we're going to see some variability between fall and winter scores. In some cases, it's also because the assessment has changed. Even if we're assessing the same thing, we see letter sounds in fall and winter, the threshold for risk also changes. So their goal in the fall is different than their goal in the winter. It raises across that time. All of these assessments are timed. So when we talk about letter sounds or decodable words, it's a list in front of students that they read and it's timed for a minute. We measure their accuracy or how many they're getting right. I'm going to go back just for a minute. So we see four different assessments or subtests. When we look at this data, the first screen we look at is called a composite score. That's the four different subtests pulled together for a student average or a student composite score. So on the screen, we have 2020, 2021 data, 2122 data, and then current 2223. The light pink bar represents all kindergarten students across the district. The maroon bar represents all first grade students across the district. You can see we have fall, winter, spring, fall, winter, spring, and then of course, this year only fall, winter. We do assess all three periods every year. So again, the first thing we notice is the 80th percentile line. JP had referenced this as a data point. We don't set that locally. This comes right from research, right from MDE. If 80% of our students aren't meeting target, we need to continue to evaluate and bolster tier one instruction, which is our literacy block. Once we hit that threshold, then we talk about how can we add layers or interventions for student support? You can see we're below that 80th percentile, which is what triggered the working groups in 2018. And we've continued to track and try to put pieces in to support students. The other thing we notice is a pretty significant decrease from fall to winter, specifically in kindergarten. You see that two years ago, last year, and again this year, but a much, a much different decrease this year. And again, I had shared with you the difference in assessments. As a kindergarten student in the fall, I'm asked to identify letter names and letter sounds. Onset sounds, that beginning sound is part of it. As is concepts of print, you're going to show me a book and I'm going to tell you that's the cover, that's the title, that's the author. In the winter, I have to read words. And that's a big deal for kindergarten students, especially those who might be coming in not knowing many letters or sounds. So we typically see a pretty big dip there, but again, that test has changed. Our curriculum this year with Benchmark Advance, we still teach letter names and sounds in the fall, but we also have students apply them to words right away. So students already are sounding out words. In the past, we've really focused on letter names and letter sounds. So our, we've made some shifts there and you can see it in our data. The decrease there is not as steep. The other thing, oh, I guess to mention too, we've already surpassed our last spring score with our winter benchmark data. That's specific for kindergarten. The other thing we'll look at is in first grade, we're right on track, making growth. We typically do see that growth throughout the school year. And lastly, what we're keeping a close eye on is our pre-K numbers have been bolstered. Our pre-K programming is now across all of our elementary sites, first centrally located in town at the education center as was in the past. And we're starting to see that show in our incoming kindergarten data. So this year, 50% of our kindergarten students attended preschool with us at their elementary sites last year. This one is a little bit tricky to see with the colors, but essentially what we have here is JP had mentioned, we want to see 80% of students meeting target. We also want to see, out of the, out of the students on target, are we keeping them there? Are they maintaining that throughout the school year? Again, to maintain, they really have to grow because some of the measures change on this assessment. So on the left, you see their fall performance. This data is from two school years ago. On the right, you see their winter performance. That top green is the color, shows students who are on track in the fall. 75% of them, two school years ago, so prior to Benchmark Advance, stayed on track. We want to see that number at 95%. So we knew that we had work to do. The other thing we keep an eye on is students who are just right there, so we would call that some risk. We moved 24% of that pocket of students up to low risk two school years ago. So those are the two numbers we're really watching closely. This school year, from fall to winter, we moved 84, I'm sorry, 84% of students who were on track stayed on track. So we saw a significant increase there and for sure, we want to see that number at 95. And we were able to move 36% of the students who were at some risk up to low risk. So we saw significant increases in both of those areas as well. Everything we've looked at so far has been that composite score. I'm going to go through a few subtests to show some of the growth here as well. Letter sounds is assessed in fall, winter, and spring. You'll notice on these slides, on the left-hand side of the screen, I named some of the programs we previously were using. We knew in 2018, we had work to do. We also knew we weren't ready with the Minnesota State Standards updating to do a big curriculum push. So we started being creative and investing in interventions or things we could use in tier one to help. So you see those listed on the left-hand side. We were using a program called K-Pals, a program called EAK, and as JP had said, Jan Richardson, Next Steps in Guided Reading. You can see on the right, now we're only using Benchmark Advanced. There's our 80th percentile line. So this is all kindergarten students in the district. I've put boxes around the winter benchmark period. You can see this winter, our kindergarten students have surpassed where they were, where last year's kindergartners were in the spring. So definitely some growth as well. Onset sounds, this assessment is what students hear at the beginning of the word. This is a really important skill, especially with the science of reading. We'd say this is one of the major foundation skills. Again, we've listed the programs up at the top. There's our 80th percentile line, so we've still got work to do. But again, we've surpassed this winter where our kindergarten students ended last spring. Or I'm sorry, last winter. Decodable words is probably the most significant data point we look at as a foundational reading skill. So the 80th percentile line is in there. You can see that this is significant because we've tried with four other programs previous to this year to try to support students in this area. K-Pals, PALS, phoneme graphing mapping, which JP had talked about prior as well. So again, we have the box around our winter periods. In kindergarten, this assessment is not given in the fall, but you can see it come there in the winter. Last school year, we had 47% of students meeting their target in decodable words. This year, we're at 58%, so we've seen an increase there. And then we also draw the comparison alone, just within kindergarten. Lastly, word segmenting, another big foundation skill for early literacy. We see the 80th percentile line last spring. Our first grade students had met that goal, that target. Again, in kindergarten, this assessment starts in winter, so winter and spring period. Last school year, we had 61% of students meeting this target across kindergarten and first grade, and we're up to 71% this school year. And again, we see definitely the increase there, again, in K as well as first. I said that.
Sure. So you'll continue, thank you, Katie. What you'll continue to see is progress in other areas of our fast assessment as well. The next one we'll take a look at is CBM reading. This is an assessment that takes about a minute and we, it's a, it's students reading grade level passages to an adult three different times and scoring how quickly and how accurately they read, they do that reading. Again, our goal is to measure our results by keeping kids on track, who are on track and meeting target, who are on, meeting target, and keeping them in that way, and moving to students who are not meeting target to doing so. Here is us, here's our performance last year during the 21, 22 school year. 89% of our students who met target stayed there and we moved 24% of those who partially met to meeting the target. This year, through the use of our teacher's implementation of Benchmark Advance, that number rose to about 92%, so not quite to where we'd like to get. And the number of students moving from partially to meeting target, it looks like I want to get here, was about 27%. So again, not where we want to be yet, but we're trending in the right direction early in our implementation. Another way to look at this is, again, pointing out that in the fall, only second through fourth graders take this assessment and then winter and spring, first, first grade is brought into that. And you can see that where our target is, is a goal for our district. And from fall to winter, we've seen slight decreases in years past. Where this year, we're seeing some promising. Where this year, we're seeing some promising early results with our results not dropping at all, but we're actually increasing from fall to winter in this area. And then the last area that we're going to focus on is A-reading. A-reading is a broad comprehension, or broad reading test that is very prescriptive on how students will do overall in reading achievement. This is a computer-adapted test. The test questions then adjust based on how students answer on the previous question. Again, we are looking at results close to where we'd like to be from years past, but this year, those results have notched up a bit. We're 90% of our students who were on target stayed there and we moved 28% to meeting target. This year, again, we've seen a little bit of a drop from fall to winter as the assessment shifts on students. The target of the assessment shifts on students from fall to winter. And this year, though we did not see the same results here trending up as we've seen in the other assessments, the reduction hasn't been as pronounced as it has been in the past couple of years. So again, I'll go back to our teachers. I need to create a moment here to give all K6 educators a huge boost of credit for the work that they are doing. This is no small undertaking. They are getting used to a whole set of new resources and tools that are unfamiliar to them, but they are going through the different steps. They have really put in, you know, when I talk to teachers, a lot of extra time on this to make sure that they're doing it right. Our Lit coaches have been fantastic in coming in and working alongside teachers. But we're still working with a K6 group of ELA, English Language Arts teachers, even this year, with the focus of, now that we've got these resources in hand in district, we're learning from them, how can we continue to listen to our educators and leverage support with professional development or time for planning, whatever that might be? A couple of the other things that we've been doing is now making sure that these new resources are in fact aligned to the new standards that will be completely expected to implement in the 25, 26 school year. Some of the other things that they're focusing on is around reporting progress to parents and to students. You know, currently, and what we've done in years past is we assign students a 1, 2, 3, or 4, or an A through F scale as it relates to their learning. And we, you know, that gives parents a general idea of how their students are doing in a particular subject area. But we want to be even more granular and precise in that. So that if my student has an A in elementary literacy, where are they doing super well? And where are some ideas that are some particular standards that we can still encourage and support at home or have conversations with teachers around? And if it's not an A, if they're getting something lower than that, again, where are some areas to celebrate? And where are some areas to focus on for growth for students through the lens of standards? What does that look like? The other thing that we're really working on is with Benchmark Advanced, a whole suite of assessments come with the program that measure students' progress through the curricular resources. Those are in some degree customizable for us. So teachers are, well, this team of teachers will be working through, how do we create a district-wide assessment map using the Benchmark Assessment Suite? So that we're using the same or very similar assessments across the district for how we can monitor students' progress far more often than fall, winter, and spring FAST assessments and intervene when we see kids are struggling. So with that, Katie and I will open it up to questions if you have any.
I was able to see the presentation in the committee a couple of weeks ago. So I just like to, I don't have any questions. I just agree, Ed, right? What a great job the teachers have done in adapting to the new program, maintaining the numbers, and actually even seeing some improvement. So it's exciting.
I just want to add that I was on the curriculum committee when Katie, your group was doing that work of assessing all the data and the information from different vendors. So I just am so proud of the Benchmark Advanced choice. It seems like it was the best for our district. We got to see all the materials displayed and the consumables, I mean, the things that go home, the books, just, they were just wonderful materials. So hats off. I was very excited to see that 50% move in the preschool. Do we have preschool in our schools in every building? We do. I do. We do. I remember when it started. I think it's an exciting thing that we do and I'm glad to see that that growth is there. We know that kids that struggle with reading in, by third grade, if they're not up and running, there's just so many difficulties that ensue with testing and all that. So it's just critical that you guys have your eye on all this data and I just appreciate you coming tonight and sharing that with us. And I'm glad to hear the teachers are not pulling their hair out yet and are seeming to settle in. It is a huge job. I've talked to a few of them. It's a big, big undertaking, so.
Yeah, we certainly hope that none of them are pulling their hair out yet, but it has, I think, again, we can't mention enough how much we appreciate the work that they have been putting in through this.
And one question for you JP. Do you find that since, you know, we have this continuity now district-wide, we don't have Jan Richardson, we kind of, Katie, you said that it's just all Benchmark Advanced. What do you think are the positives with that?
Again, the system is so research-based across the board around, and it really wraps in all of the principles of the science of reading that we have talked about. And the materials are rigorous. I mean, they are, we are seeing where kids are really having to stretch themselves with the level of reading that they're doing this year with Benchmark. And teachers are doing everything they can to scaffold up to that. But we know that we've got to have, we've got to raise expectations and support them along the way. And we know that these particular resources really do a nice job with that.
Yeah, and I think that district-wide, having that continuity, then we're just going to see the scores go high because there's that consistency.
Yeah, and I think that there is a level of commitment that every teaching and learning department in district and I would believe school board would like to make in that, you know, regardless of where, the randomness of where your parent might buy a home in the district, they're going to get a same high-quality education in every one of our schools. And I think through a consistent use of resources like that, we begin, we do a better job of meeting that promise.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I want to make sure I did not mention all the work the teachers have done. I know that there had to be a lot of late nights and work on weekends and I really appreciate that implementing a new curriculum is no small undertaking. It is nice to see that we didn't see a significant drop during that implementation and that's in no small part of all the work they've done, so.
Yeah, so I make sure we recognize that. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd entertain a motion to recess.
For five minutes?
Ten.
Ten?
I found out we can't do anything in five minutes.
Ten minutes, five.
Ten-minute recess. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
We are recessed.
This time I would entertain a motion to call the meeting back to order.
So, who?
A motion of second. Any discussion? None. All those in favor of calling the meeting back to order? If you have a sign of eye.
Eye.
Opposed? Eyes habits. Member Tyson, could you please take a roll call?
Yes. Member Tyson is here. Member Rivaline?
Here.
Member Kirkren is absent. Member Hagan?
Here.
Member Peterson?
Here.
Member Rayfield's absent. And member Christensen?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, member Tyson. We will move on to Oscar Habbitts. Anybody? Member Christensen?
Thank you. I was able to go to a bunch of things in the last several weeks. I went to the ninth grade band and orchestra concert. And Mr. Livermore and Mr. Zemwaldi did a wonderful job. There was a good attendance there, so that was fun to see at the high school. I also attended the end of the season wrestling banquet, which was really exciting to celebrate the season. I went to the middle school showcase, which was really fun. There was a great turnout. Always hard to park at the middle school when there's a big event going on. And they were band and orchestra recitals, and student projects were on display. And I also want to give a little shout out to our dedicated staff members, who, I don't want to make a spoiler, but some of them dress up to be Ronnie Ranger, which is very nice. I imagine that costume has probably, I don't know, has an odor to it. I'm not sure. But anyway, a staff member was dressed up, and that was really fun, although she will remain anonymous. I also attended the Scandia Art and Academic Fair the other Friday night, and the Scandia PTO did a wonderful job. We had a book fair, and the jazz band came and played too, which was really fun. And I also went to the Community Ed Blood Drive, which was really great to see a really good turnout there. There was a waiting area for people. And lastly, I attended the third grade concert at Scandia just the other evening. It was pirate themed, and they were adorable. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have one notable thing here. I've been doing a lot of PTO meetings, a bunch of other things too, but I may have been rolled into a dunk tank up here today, and I thought I would mention it to this room, because I'm sure there are many in here that would love the opportunity. I see some heads nodding. The money goes to a good cause, so I'm willing to take it back a time or two. So, that's Linwood. I tried to convince Columbus to do the same thing at their end of the year. So, keep your eyes open. You may have an opportunity to dunk a board member.
Do you want to go?
I want to.
Okay. So, I went to a few fun things too. I went to the second grade concert at Forest View Elementary. It was adorable. I was a little late. I thought it started at seven, so I kind of snuck in and we had started. But they had on their pajamas, and they're little squishies, and all the teachers knit on their pajamas as well. And Mrs. Hogan did a great job. They were just singing their hearts out. And you know, it was a really cold, Friday night, like many have been, and it was just so heartwarming. I just felt so great when I left. The other thing, I went to the Ranger Art Review. I didn't go on the big opening night, because I had another commitment, but that sounded really fun. They had, the high school music was there. They had refreshments, refreshments. I just want to note that Maple Tree Dentistry was the sponsor. So, up in Wyoming is Hallberg Center for the Arts, and so I went with my sister, and there was so much beautiful artwork. We were in there forever. Good thing we didn't take our husbands. They wouldn't let us stay that long. But the artwork was amazing. So, I just encourage anybody that's interested in seeing that. It goes from two to eight every day. I think they close on Monday or something. And then yesterday, I went to the Special Ed Advisory Committee Planning Meeting. It was the last one of the year. And just two words for the parents that were there. They're just so ambitious and have such great ideas. They are very productive. The whole night was, the whole year is planned out, so great things happening there. The other thing I wanted to note is that I went, I also serve on the 916th, so I went to two program tours, which was very fun to go to. I went to Stillwater and visited the auditory oral program, which is great. You can pass these around if you want to see them. And then I toured the Bel Air Education Center, because it now has kind of a different focus. It's more of a middle school and has about nineteen students there. The last thing I wanted to showcase was we've got our Community Ed magazines. And my fourth grade neighbor was going by, and she calls this her fun magazine. She likes to whip her stuff to do. I'm like, wow, all the camps are in there. Lastly, I'd like to highlight, kind of say something about Forest Lake Times. We have such wonderful articles sitting here by our principals and our superintendent, and our student activities are highlighted. And this one was March sixteenth, in Principal Newby's office. The principal's office was Principal Newby from Forest View Elementary, Forest Lake Elementary. And I just want to read a little bit. It's highlighting special ed in our district, but I just want to read a couple sentences in the beginning. And you know, Forest Lake encompasses twelve towns. So, I always encourage parents, when I see them, to go online and subscribe to the Times, so they can read all these great articles that the paper generates. But anyway, I just want to read a couple sentences of his article. He says, "One of the things I love most about working in a public school is that we serve everyone. Any student in our community can walk through our doors and find opportunity for growth and development regardless of their economic status, academic potential, family support, or any of the other variables a child cannot control." So, anyway, I have this to pass around. I want to thank him and thank everybody that has articles in here of other students in our schools. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, member Tyson. Anyone else?
I want to say that the Forest Lake trap team has begun their practice and shooting for the year, and that's very exciting. My son's participating on that. And been out there. It'd be nice if the snow would go away and the sun would come out, but here we are. So, with that, we will move on. Seeing nothing else, we'll move on to reports. Any workshops or conferences?
Just a couple of mentions. I went to the, I attended the C Metro Winter Regional Meeting, which was virtual. Several big discussions, and C is Schools for Equity and Education that we are a part of. They talked a lot about, you know, the bills and the money on the formula, the cross subsidy, how it's going to flush out, and it seems to kind of change daily. We talked about the school lunches. That was kind of a big discussion in the beginning. A lot of discussion around the one-time money and what are the strings that are going to be attached. So, overall, it was just a great meeting to hear what other districts are thinking. And moving forward, we're all hoping for the best outcome for everyone. And then I also, on MSBA Day at the Capitol, I had some conversations with our new representative, Patty Anderson. And then, as well as Senator Koenisch, I wanted to ask her, she's kind of changed her mind about tying the formula to the rate of inflation. And so, I had a great discussion with Patty Anderson, our new representative, and a little bit with Karen Housley. So, I won't do a lot of detail, but if anybody wants to know more, they can call me or email me.
Anyone else on workshops or conferences? That will move to nine sixteen. Also, member Tyson?
All right. We had our meeting last night. We had a lot of, we had a presentation. It started with that two members had attended the National Conference in Tampa, and the other member had attended the new COSPA, the split. So, they both noted that it was low attendance since the split, but they gave some great presentations in the beginning with great speakers, and overall, it was a good conference. We heard the superintendent's report. She's very excited about the new access that board members can have to dashboard, which updates what the wait lists are, what buildings our students are in. It just gives a lot of information to students in our district that attend nine sixteen. And she's happy that all the director and the superintendent can have access to that as well. They talked about teacher vacancies. They've usually struggled with EA vacancies, but this year they've had some teacher vacancies, you know, in special ed that they're trying to fill. We had routine actions, such as approval to amend the school calendar, accepting the new calendar for SY twenty-three, twenty-four. And then also, we had a resolution approving the long-term facility maintenance program that we are included in, in the thirteen members districts, and that'll be coming to us. And that concludes my report.
We'll move to buildings and grounds. Member Hagland?
So, we got an update on Ice Arena Project. It looks like they're still on track for an August completion date. Talked about the long-term facilities maintenance agreement or timeline. A review will be coming to the board in May for first reading, and then June approval to meet the July thirty-first deadline. Talked about the Bobcat and some of the issues they've been having with maintenance items on there, but they've been resolved or getting resolved, and the help they've gotten from St. Craig Restoration with the snow removal. Talked about some of the staffing issues that they're still dealing with. They're down five, but are still keeping up with all the maintenance and cleaning that needs to be done. And the observatory is still probably on hold for now, because that was weather dependent. Snow removal, they had an increase of $200,000 this year. So, for context, the twenty-one, twenty-two snow removal was $113,000. The twenty-twenty-one snow removal was $108,000. So, we're almost $100,000 overbited to the extra snow this year. And then lastly, they traded in a cabot tractor that wasn't being used for a ETB, and that will save a lot, serve a lot of multiple roles down at the athletic fields. That's all I have.
Member Hagland, we'll move to City of Forest Lake. Member Christensen?
I was not able to attend the meeting and I don't have a report.
All right. We'll move to Communications Committee. Member Christensen?
Yes, I attended the Communications Committee on March sixteenth, and we talked a lot about the guidelines for the digital backpack. And what that is, is, you know, back how many of years ago, fly, you know, Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts could put flyers in the Friday folders to go home to all the elementary school students, and then kind of the important work or homework from the school or notes from the school would kind of get lost in the shuffle. So, now, for the last several years, there's been a digital backpack. So, they, Tracy Angelo and Corey McKinnon talked about the, how you can go about putting something in the digital backpack, what is allowed in the digital backpack, and how you can access the digital backpack. So, we also talked a little bit about the district calendar, and how Community Ed schedules all the facilities before and after school nights, and on the weekends, and how during the school day, the school schedules their own things. So, there's a differentiation there that some people, it's confusing for some people. So, thank you.
And we'll move to Community Education. Member Christensen?
Yes, thank you. I went to the Communication Education Committee. Oops. Sorry. I don't have my paper. It was online. I know that. It was in Zoom. And if I recall, you know what? I'm not going to speculate. I'm sorry. I don't have my piece of paper, but I attended a busy meeting. Sorry.
We'll move on to Curriculum. It does happen. Curriculum Instruction and Equity. Any member else?
Yeah, actually, my report is very, very simple this evening, because JP covered most of it for me. We saw kind of a preview of the presentation.
Thank you. Finance Committee, I'll cover that one tonight. We went over the run rates for the district. We reviewed the budget as it's at now. And then we had a legislative update, which I won't get too deep into, because I believe Dr. Massey's going to give us some update tonight on some of that info. And we will move on to Policy Committee?
Okay, I can do that. We had a legislative update, which I'm sure we'll have another new one tonight. We talked about enrollment, which was quite interesting, enrollment update. We also discussed media resources, primarily our books and the systems for ordering. Pardon me?
That's staff welfare.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. We'll go back to policy with member Rivaline. No worries.
I'm sorry, member Rivaline. All right. And we talked about the Chief and Integration Program. That concludes my report. So, I'm sorry.
We'll move back to policy. Member Rivaline?
Well, we just, do you want to do policy as well? Okay, policy is really simple. We have a couple that we're going to approve later this evening, and two for new business. I think it might be the first time that I've been on the Policy Committee that we've made it through our full agenda. So, that was, that was encouraging.
Thanks. All right. Then we move on to the Superintendent Report. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I continue to be concerned about bus cancellations, and largely driven by a tight labor market and the ability to recruit bus drivers. I'm happy to share here that we spent two months prior to the current window that we're in, where we did not have a single bus driver applicant. Therefore, no drivers in training, no drivers in the pipeline. Currently, we have six drivers who've applied and have now engaged in their training. Depending upon the certification that they have coming in, CDL, bus driver endorsement will determine the length of training that they have to go through. But we're encouraged by the drivers that we have in training. Additionally, we recently, in fact, this week, combined four routes into two routes. That reduces the need for two drivers right off the bat there. So, making some progress there, and we have drivers returning from winter vacations, as well as unfortunately, some leaving for spring and summer jobs, and it's the nature of the job force. But we're encouraged by some of the trends that we're seeing, and we see improvements coming shortly on transportation. Let me walk you through a quick update on where we're at with the legislature, specifically legislative funding increases. We know that the state has a robust fund balance, $17.5 billion. The spending targets for the House and the Senate Education Finance Committees is $2.25 billion for each of their respective committees. With those targets in place, they're beginning to shape their finance budgets for the next biennium. I'm including here, just as a way to give perspective, the balance of where they're landing in the House and Senate with respect to per pupil funding. That's the large funding source that we get from the state. Schools are funded by, on a per pupil basis, and then special education cross subsidy. So, on the per pupil basic revenue, the House and the Senate is very similar, and the governor's budget actually is quite similar here as well. The House is proposing in their bill, a four percent increase on per pupil funding to two percent in the second year, tied to inflation. So, tied to inflation, but capped at three percent. So, if inflation is running at four or five percent, the cap would be three percent. So, the most we would get in that year would be five percent. Again, tied to the CPI and tied to inflation. In twenty-four, the next year, in the first year in the biennium, the ADM increase for Forest Lake would be $332 per pupil on the House Funding Bill. And then five hundred and fifteen, if inflation is still running high, and it's at five percent. On the special education cross subsidy level, the House is funding special education cross subsidy at forty-seven, almost forty-eight percent. If that carries through, that would generate $595 per pupil in the first year, upwards to $626 on the ADM basis in the second. When you combine those on a per pupil basis, multiply that by our average daily membership on a pupil basis, that would generate in the first year, $5.143 million of revenue. And then in the second year, $6.2 million of revenue. Just on those two sources, there are additional funding sources, not at that magnitude, but there are additional funding sources. The first one would be transportation sparsity. I've written about that. I've got an article in the Forest Lake Times this week on this issue. This is specifically the bill that Forest Lake has developed and have been lobbying legislators since the beginning of the legislative session, working with the one hundred some other districts in the state that share a cross subsidy and a sparsity deficit here. That specific bill is carried in the House. Unfortunately, not in the Senate, but we're alive in the process by being in the House bill. That would increase transportation sparsity up to forty percent. English learner cross subsidy, student support dollars, and some other small categorical funding. But the largest portions would generate dollars in this year. That should generate a great deal of excitement from a funding source. And what happens next is the House and Senate will meet, and they'll reconcile their two bills that are similar in many ways, but different in some magnitude. They'll need to come together and create one omnibus bill. That then, if passed in the House and Senate, goes to the governor for signature. So, that's the next step. They adjourn on May twenty-third, and between, starting next week after the Easter recess, they will begin their work moving forward with one omnibus education finance bill. Along with the finance bill is a policy bill. And there are a number of policy items that we need to be paying attention to. And those are in part listed here. These are the significant ones. There's a policy bill, I won't get into all the specifics, but a policy bill that would increase teacher preparation time. It would essentially create a requirement for districts to increase teacher prep time by one-third. Keep in mind, students need to go somewhere while teachers are prepping. That would increase the need for additional staffing at about one-third ratio. Paid family medical leave at $46 in ADM. Minimum wage for non-certified workers, up to a minimum of $25 per hour. Increased contributions to medical insurance for non-certified workers and pension reform. You can see the dollars on an ADM basis for each of those items. If they move forward unfunded, and currently, they are not funded in the policy bills. So, we are enormously concerned about these items. However, I think each of these have their own merit, and frankly, I think have benefit. And if funded, I think are worthy. But unfunded, we're creating enormous burden on our district to the tune of, you can see here. on our district to the tune of, you can see here, the potential revenue combined in the first year at 5.1 million. Those potential new policy mandates, if unfunded, would cost our district $10 million. And creating a $4 million, or almost a $5 million deficit. So while we get excited about the potential funding increases, that could be offset to the tune of $10 million, creating a deficit for us moving forwards. On one hand, we're excited about this whole asset to state, potential revenue. But if these policy things move forward unfunded, we would be in a really challenging, difficult situation from a budget standpoint. So I'll stand for any questions related to this information.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. If things were past as they are today, even with funding increases, we would be looking at a negative of $5 million to our current operating.
That's correct.
Okay. And our, I believe we're going to touch on this later in the meeting here, but our general fund balance is standing at just over $1 million right now?
That's correct.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Thank you.
So I just want to say that this is the conversation I had with Representative Patty Anderson, is that these mandates are just going to eat up all the money. And it was a favorable conversation because she absolutely agreed and said that she's going to keep her eye on them. And that, that was a lot of speculation at 9/16 member board last night was that, yeah, mandates are going to just eat up and put people in a deficit. So 20 years of underfunding public education, it's like the opportunity is just gone with those policy mandates. So I think all of us on the board should be talking, having conversations, emailing our representatives and senators and seeing what we can do to advocate.
Any other questions, comments on this portion?
I think if I, if I may add, a takeaway for the board, for our community, would be, to a certain extent, a call to action to be engaged with our local legislators on this topic. If these are valuable items from a policy standpoint, and you can make the case that they are, then they should be funded. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Massey. We'll move on to tonight's consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So.
A second. A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by the sign of a "aye."
Aye.
Motion passes. We will move on to eight action items. Eight-one FLAS retirement notice. We have a couple of retirements tonight. We've got Kathy Maribella, cook helper in Forest Buick Elementary with eight years of service. Eric Russell, a school bus driver with 19 years of service. Sad to see him go with our conversation earlier. Christopher Vogel, teacher at Forest Lake Area Senior High School after 31 years of service. What was your pleasure with eight-one?
Would you approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
I'd just like to say, I did add it up. It's 58 years combined. And I would like to say that when we lived in Scandinavia, Eric was our best friend for a long time. And a really nice guy, huge Gopher fan, loved to talk about any of the Gopher sports. Really nice guy. So I wish him luck.
Name, Member Tyson?
I just want to mention too that Mr. Vogel was one of my daughter's teachers. He was just such a kind teacher. He, in 31 years of service, I think it was all at the high school. And I just want to wish him well on his retirement. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor of passing eight-one, signify by the sign of a "aye."
Aye.
Names. Your motion passes. We'll move on to donations. Eight-two. What's your pleasure with eight-two? Actually, we should have Member Christiansen read those, if you'd like.
Can you?
Otherwise, I can, Member Tyson, you can read them.
You go for it. Okay.
The donations this evening are from the Forest Lake Boys Lacrosse Booster Club, $10,024.96. The Fast Break Club, $6,348.22. $500 from the Wealth Management Midwest, or the Hall of Fame donations. $500 from Jesse Johnson Insurance. Also, Aaron Turner, Legal Services and Olson Sewer Services, all $500. Or the Forest Lake Hall of Fame donation. Member Haglund and Member Revoline both donated $500 each towards expenses concerning property purchase or any manner deemed appropriate by the district administration. $150 donation from the Cedar East Bethel Lions Club for Lynwood Elementary, and $30 from Target Corporation Cyber Grants for Lynwood Elementary student use, for a total of $19,553.18. I move that we accept these generous donations.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion.
I just wanted to add, no donation for the, specifically for the land for the hockey arena, for the purchase of Forest Lake.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Member Tyson?
We're just so blessed. We have such a strong community, all our communities that surround our district. And our booster clubs and board members, it's just an awesome. Everyone, donations are amazing. So thank you.
Anyone else? I'd like to thank all the community for those donations. And thank you both, Member Haglund and Member Revoline, for your donation toward the purchase of that land. And with that, we have a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of accepting the donations as read, signify by a sign of a "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes. We will move on.
Can I call extension to that? A request for a roll call vote, please.
Sure.
All right, Member Christiansen.
Aye. I almost said here. Sorry. Sorry.
Member Tyson votes aye. Member Revoline?
I'd like to abstain.
Abstain. Member Corcoran is absent. Member Haglund?
Abstain.
Abstain. Member Peterson?
Aye.
Aye. And Member Rayfield is absent.
All right, so motion passes. We move on to eight-three, general fund budget adjustment. Director, Director Remberg, aye.
Perfect. I know. Last name's still kicking in. For me. So I am, thank you Chair Peterson and board members, happy to be here tonight. The district budget is a roadmap for the year. Each month, the revenue and expenditure budgets are reviewed by the finance committee. The expended budget is compared to the prior year's budget for the trend analysis. The proposed budget adjustments for tonight are a result of this review. So I want to go through the attachment. And so we start out with the revenue side of things. So our first adjustment is to federal sources and the amount of $450,000. And so as we worked through closing our audit from last year through the end of the school year, we were able to save some of those COVID funds that we had and put them into this school year. And so that was really great. And so we're able to increase the revenue there. Also, the second one is other local sources. And that $800,000 for other local sources is part of the bonds that we sold over the summer. And that is to purchase the buses that we had. So we were leasing and then decided to purchase. And so we're just increasing the revenue to show that bond. And the expenditure side, we're seeing our supplies go up $1 million. And that has to do with our benchmark curriculum that you actually saw tonight. And so some of that is offset by our federal sources. And that benchmark is both school year and summer. Some of the money for COVID was required for summer programming. It had to be used in that area. So we were also able to get benchmark with those funds in summer, which is really great. And then the other expenditure is the buses. So it's a plus and minus on that area. So those two equal out. Overall, I do appreciate you not calling out my typo on my cover letter. And we ended up with a $550,000 adjustment to the general fund budget. So with that, the administration recommends approval.
What is your pleasure with eight-three?
Would you approve?
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by the sign of a "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes down.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to eight-four, adopt a resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of probationary teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Beginning in January, each year, district and building administrators begin staffed meetings where we review and discuss anticipated enrollments, staff who will be going on or returning from leave of absence, retirements and resignations, probationary teacher performance, class sizes, and of course, the budget and funding levels for the next school year. At tonight's meeting, I've shared a list of our recommendations as we have completed this work. Some of these probationary teachers you see on the list in front of you are filling, this year, we're filling positions where a teacher is due to return from a leave of absence. Others are non-renewed for other reasons, including performance or staffing needs. Administration would recommend your approval of the non-renewal of the probationary teachers on the list in front of you.
All right, what's your pleasure with eight-four?
Would you approve?
We have a motion and a second. Do you have to read that?
No.
Okay. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I just, I have one question. Are, are any of these cuts due to budgetary reasons? Or is it simply teachers returning and shoveling around and needs?
Right. Yeah, good question. None are related to budget due to the open positions that get created with people moving to other positions, people taking leaves, and those kind of things. So these are all related to reductions related to performance, people coming back from leave and bumping them out of a position, but none are reductions from a budget.
Okay. For those teachers that are not being released due to performance reasons, will they have a greater opportunity to apply or greater preferential treatment during the interming process for open positions that may exist next fall?
Yeah. As positions open, there are certainly folks on this list that we would encourage to apply and certainly get deep consideration for continued work. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Member Clerk, would you please say your roll call?
Member Rayfield is absent. Member Christiansen?
Aye. Excuse me. Sorry. Aye.
Member Tyson votes aye. Member Revoline?
Aye.
Member Corcoran is absent. Member Haglund?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move to eight-five, adopt a resolution relating to the non-renewal of the portion of a teacher's 2022-23 assignment for which the teacher does not hold continuing contract status.
For this current school year, the 22-23 school year, some teachers were moved from a part-time status to full-time in order to provide substitute work for folks who were absent for illness or other reasons. There are two teachers on this list in front of you that are continuing contract at a, at a level less than full-time. As I mentioned, with one-time dollars, the position was extended for this year in order to fulfill some vacancies and substitute need for us. So in order to remove, to move them back to their original continuing contract status, we need to terminate the portion of their contract that was extended. And that is the recommendation in front of you.
Excuse me, Superintendent, are they on this list?
No, they're on a separate list. We don't.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Can I have that list, too?
Give me that.
And put the short list.
A motion to accept.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
It's a tough time of year. We always go through this. Other districts are doing the same thing, but it's never easy. So.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Member Clerk, would you please say your roll call?
Certainly. Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield is absent. Member Christiansen?
Aye.
Member Tyson votes aye. Member Revoline?
Aye.
Votes aye. Member Corcoran is absent. Member Haglund?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will move on to eight-six, accept federal audit. Director Remberg, aye.
Thank you very much. When I was here in January, we talked about the fact that MMKR presented our full audit. And normally, that includes the single audit also for our federal programs. However, due to all the COVID funding this year and all the districts that they do, they had an extension that the federal government had allowed for, and therefore they took advantage of that. And so we're presenting this separately this year. Again, really different from years past when it's just all part of the audit together. But for the 21-22 school year, we had two federal programs that were reviewed in the single audit process. The Emergency Connectivity Fund Program and the Education Stabilization Fund. The auditors issued an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that you can get. There was no finding with the financial reports. And we did have one finding in the internal controls area. And so if you look at the document for the corrective action plan, what you'll see is that area was in our Emergency Connectivity Fund. With those funds, they were designed for, to meet, to have an unmet need, an unmet need met. And so what we did is we ordered Chromebooks with those way back in October of the school year. And when we did that, we didn't know and we anticipated that we would likely go back into distance learning. And so luckily for us, that didn't happen for the longer period of time. And therefore, we didn't need to use all of those Chromebooks for distance learning. And therefore, not all of them ended up getting used within that school year. And so that's what the finding is about, is the fact that 66 of them ended up not getting used within the school year. And so what we're able to do is, the corrective action is, we've made sure that all of them have been used this school year, and we've done that. And so we're, we'll move on from there. And that'll be our corrective action plan. So that is, I brought this to the finance committee very early in the process, probably October, November, and let them know that this was coming and being looked at. And, you know, it is a lot of regulations with all the COVID fundings. We do our best. And we know that we needed to be ready for distance learning at any given time. And so we did that. And in the end, luckily, we didn't have to. And so, as I said, that's the finding for the, for the report. We're easily able to correct it, and we'll move on from it.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept eight-six?
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion. Member Revoline?
I had a question on that one. Was there any negative financial impact to that one? Or did we just have to put those Chromebooks into use?
No. So we'll put the Chromebooks into use. If we undergo a federal audit through the government versus just our auditors, then they could take back the funds for the 66.
And what is that approximate dollar amount?
So they were about 200 apiece.
So 200 times 66, okay. What is the likelihood that the federal government will come back and request that from us?
Yeah. So I would say that it's unknown at this time. It's unprecedented, the COVID funding that happened. And so we just don't know what kind of auditing will happen on that.
Okay. I think I alluded to this earlier, but I think that was our general fund right around that 1.2, 1.3 million dollar, or our general.
With our budget adjustment.
Is that accurate? Or what is our current general fund balance right now?
That is the last budget adjustment we have. We will likely have one more budget adjustment before the end of the school year. And that'll go through the finance committee first and then come to the board for approval.
All right. Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Member Tyson?
So, thank you. So I'm seeing this for the first time. I know Luke and whoever's on the committee has seen it. So just a couple of quick questions. So this is just directly due to the COVID funds?
Correct.
Okay. So the FCC, this program through them, just came to us purely for the reason of COVID?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. Member Clerk, would you please say your roll call? Member Clerk, would you please say your roll call?
Certainly. Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Ray Phiel is absent. Member Christensen?
Aye.
Member Tyson votes aye. Member Revillane?
Aye.
Member Corcoran is absent. And Member Hagland?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will move on to eight seven, Transportation Employee Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy. Three thirteen, Dr. Massey.
All school district transportation employees whose positions require a commercial driver's license, CDL, will be required to undergo drug and alcohol testing in accordance with federal law and the applicable provisions of this policy. Most noteworthy updates to this policy involve the inclusion of medical cannabis, whether, whether or not it has been prescribed for the employee. And you'll see throughout the policy, inclusion of that language so that it's aligned with other aspects of this policy. The policy, as mentioned earlier tonight, also states and calls off the provisions for drug testing. And of course, we do that in an established and random fashion. And we'll continue to monitor that work. There's also updates with respect to record-keeping requirements for the retention of records. And you'll see that in the policy. And then, additional language on the reporting of drug and alcohol testing results to the clinics. With that, administration recommends approval.
Do we have a motion to accept eight seven?
So.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by the sign of a high.
Aye.
Aye. Name is? Motion passes. We'll move to eight eight, Meal Charging Policy Five-O-Six, Dr. Massey.
Forest Lake Nutrition Services strive to ensure that all meals are healthy, well-balanced, and provide students the nutrition they need to succeed at school. Unpaid meal charges place a financial burden on the Nutrition Services Department. This policy is to ensure compliance with the federal reporting requirements for the USDA Child Nutrition Program and to provide oversight and accountability for the collection of outstanding meal balances. As is always the case on policies that come to the board, the Policy Committee has spent time working on these policies and made recommendations for your approval. The recommendations here tonight are with respect to providing no limitations on specific type of meals made available to students. So, basically, including now breakfast as a meal that kids cannot be denied if the meal comes out in a negative balance. With that, administration would recommend approval.
Do we have a motion to approve eight eight?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by the sign of a high.
Aye.
Name is? Eyes have it. We'll move to eight nine, Wellness Policy Five-Forty-Six, Dr. Massey.
All school districts that participate in the National Lunch and School Breakfast Program are required by the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of two thousand and ten to have a wellness policy that includes standards and nutrition guidelines for foods and beverages made available to students on campus during the school day, as well as specific goals for nutrition promotion and education, physical activity and other school-based activities that promote student wellness. The only change being recommended here is to update the coordinator identified in this policy from superintendent designee to naming the Director of Administration and Human Resources. With that, administration recommends approval.
Do we have a motion to approve eight nine?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by the sign of a high.
Aye.
Name is? Motion passes. We'll move to eight ten, Twenty-Two, Twenty-Four through Twenty-Two, Six, FLAS Achievement and Integration Plan, Dr. Massey.
Thank you, Mister Chair. The purpose of the Achievement and Integration, A&amp;I, for Minnesota Program asked by the Minnesota Department of Education is to pursue racial and economic integration, increase student achievement, create equitable educational opportunities and reduce academic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic and economic backgrounds in Minnesota public schools. The district's Achievement and Integration Plan was first established in the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve school year. And the action item before you is administration's recommendation for you to approve the fifth three-year plan. The previous plans have been unanimously supported by each of the previous boards that approved those plans. The state deadline for approving district plans is March fifteenth. As indicated earlier this evening, permission, however, was granted by MBE to submit the signed plan if approved following the April sixth board meeting in order to provide time for the new board members to fully review and study the plan. The plan before you is aligned with the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-five Forest Lake Area School Strategic Plan that was developed with input from over two hundred community members and a committee of forty-two members, including parents, students, community members and staff. The A&amp;I plan supports almost all aspects of this strategic plan. Most specifically, the plan aligns with, as it relates to this strategic plan, strategic focus area, excellence in high-quality instruction and excellence in equitable learning opportunities. And three goals in these areas included. Achieve the goals of the world's best workforce for all students in the school district. Attract, develop and retain high-quality, high-performing educators. Identify and transform systems that contribute to inequities. Forest Lake Area Schools submits this plan as a voluntary district and must partner with a racially-isolated district. In our case, this partnership has been created with Roseville Area Schools. Additionally, we are part of a multi-district collaboration council including Stillwater Area Schools, Roseville Area Schools, South St. Paul Schools and Hastings Schools. We developed and proposed and propose to renew this plan because of our commitment to ensuring that all students thrive to their fullest potential and that all students are able to access the wide range of learning opportunities and co-curricular opportunities we offer in the school district. This program provides added funding to support this work without shifting vital resources for one group or category of the budget in order to support a benefit. This plan must contain three, three types of goals as determined by Minnesota Statutes and Goals. These goals, goal areas include reducing the disparities in academic achievement among all students in specific categories of students, excluding the categories of gender, disability and English learners. Reducing the disparity in inequitable access to effective and more diverse teachers among all students in specific categories of students, excluding the categories of gender, disability and English learners. And third, increasing racial and economic integration. As you reviewed the, the plan, you were able to see the three goals and strategies along with the key indicators for each of these goals. Ultimately, the goals and objectives of this plan are to raise student achievement for all students by utilizing these additional resources to provide added support for individuals who are falling behind and to provide more equitable access to rigorous learning opportunities and to support the success in these areas of international learning opportunities. Key elements and components of the plan include, first, the plan, as I mentioned before, is aligned with the district's strategic plan. It pays for existing staff, three teachers of color, part, part of five different critical positions in our teaching and learning department, along with our cultural liaisons. Professional development and culturally responsive student teaching, STEM coordination and learning at Level X Elementary, the Summer Business Innovation Academy and the Fifth Grade Cultural Response and Student Leadership, six lessons lasting sixty minutes. I would add that these are the only programs that provide a direct service to students during the school day. In summary, the Achievement and Integration Plan before you has a long history in providing important services and resources for students, especially those students who may need additional support and resources to achieve at their fullest potential and to fully access opportunities within our system. The funds and resources identified in this plan are additive, meaning that the plan allows us to provide more support and resources rather than spread existing resources more broadly when some students may need additional support to succeed in training. Administration recommends your approval of the Twenty-Three, Twenty-Six Achievement and Integration Plan. And I would add that clearly, this plan is not about fixing kids, but about building capacity within our system to meet the needs of all of our students. And with that, administration recommends approval.
Do we have a motion to approve eight ten?
We will approve.
Have a motion to approve. And a second. Member Stashak?
It's been an honor and a privilege to be a school board member the last eleven years and in that same time, serving on nine sixteen intermediate board for six years that focuses on special education. I have witnessed positive results when leaders make the right decisions that support special education and programs similar, such as our Achievement and Integration Plan. I believe as a board, we must strive to provide adequate services every day to our special education students. Through individualized educational plans, five oh four plans, we are ensuring their success, growth and academic achievement with resources, teachers, inclusion and numerous supports. Today, special education students are getting what they need. I am proud of that and everyone who has helped get us to that point should also be proud. Our Achievement and Integration Plan is similar in many ways, allowing support and resources where it is most needed. The A&amp;I program we have developed and implemented over many years builds on our past success and brings more growth. It continues to take meaningful steps with supports, resources and programs to help reduce the isolation and alienation some of our students can experience. It opens a clear path in reaching their personal and academic potential and embracing the most joyous occasion, receiving their diploma on graduation day. If we go forward with a myopic and narrow mindset, we will not be serving all of our students. It is our responsibility as a board to recognize, respect and attend to the diverse strengths and challenges of all the students we are elected to serve. We do not get to pick and choose. So, I ask you, do you want to be a school system where students perform worse the longer they stay? I will be voting for the Achievement and Integration Plan as it is our duty to serve all students in our district. This is a vote about the future and doing what's right. I recognize that this is a difficult and important decision to make, but it would be irresponsible and wrong to vote no. Here are a couple of quotes I remind myself of often. Whenever you know what is right, you must know the courage it demands. And if your actions don't live up to your words, you have nothing to say. And my favorite American writer, James Baldwin. I can't believe what you say because I see what you do. Please join me in voting yes to continue our Achievement and Integration Plan. And I ask my fellow board members to vote with me for this valuable and important program. Thank you.
Seeing as the quorum is no longer present, this meeting stands adjourned.